All right, sorry we're running out a little late. We'll commence the business session in the Port Edward Public Schools. First item is report from student representatives of student recognition.
Well, we've got a plethora of student council members here. And a very eclectic group with a lot of accomplishments in many ways. And before they can talk though, I'd like to say two of them, I saw quite a bit this summer, working very hard for the Wisconsin Rapids Rafter. So they did an awesome job. And two others I saw quite a bit this summer enjoying rafters games. And maybe someday working for the rafters, or somewhere, I don't know. But I do know two of them also work for one of the dance places. And I can't think of the name of it off the top of my head, but we won't do an advertisement. But I will let them introduce themselves. This is a great group of students you've got in front of you.
All right, so I'm Christopher Shields. I'm a senior this year. I'm the student council president. I'm in NHS Skills USA. Outside of school, I do, I do the chess club with Nikusa, since we don't, we're starting one this year, but it's not really up and running yet. And for my future plans, next year I'm going to go to a four-year school. I don't know which one yet. I'm going to apply to four. So far I've applied to two and been accepted at one. And I want to be an actuary after.
My name is Megan Shields and I'm a freshman. At school, I'm involved in student council, drama club, band and choir, and I'm the president of the freshman class. Outside of school, I'm a dancer at RSPA and I'm training this year as an apprentice to become a dance teacher next year. I was also selected for the Wisconsin State Honors Choir and will be performing with them in October. I plan on attending a four-year college, majoring in elementary education and minoring in both dance education and music.
My name is Ariel Zedan. I'm a sophomore. And in school activities, I do student council, publications, drama and ecology, club, pool club. And then outside of school, I dance at RSPA and I am going to be a teacher next year as well. And for my future plans, I plan to major in psychology and minor in dance education. I want to go to La Crosse and if I don't, my backup is Green Bay.
Okay, my name is Taylor Fo. I'm in 10th grade. And I'm in volleyball, basketball, drama, yearbook, student council, law enforcement, ecology club. I'm class secretary and I'm in team leadership. Outside of school, I like to water and snow ski. And for my future plans, I would like to attend the University of La Crosse to become a positions assistant.
All right, so the first thing we're going to talk about is the Lake Edward Craft Show that the student council helped out. That was September 3rd, that first Saturday of the school year. We helped run the food stands there. The people go through the line, order their food, come up with us, come up to us with a ticket and we get the food to them. It was pretty busy this year. It was good. Had a lot of people coming through and everyone seemed to enjoy the craft show. We also have the date for our blood drive planned. It's going to be on Halloween, October 31st. We're going to have Halloween themed for it to hopefully try to increase the people giving blood with some fun posters, vampire themes. We'll see what happens.
Okay, I'll be reporting on the Port Edward's Fun Fest. On Friday, August 12th, our student council helped with the fun run, which included a children's run and a 5K run. The money raised was donated to the Smile for Lacy Fund, which helps families with very sick children pay for expenses. After the runs, there was a car cruise and an ice cream and pie social, which the student council also helped with. And then on Saturday, August 13th, the activities included a craft fair, a car show, some kids' games, demonstrations, a scavenger hunt, a movie and food was served by the Lions Club. Our student council helped the crafters set up and clean up their tents at the beginning and end of the day. We also manned free kids' games such as toilet paper, ball and frog tosses, plus a knock down the ball with a squirt gun game. We then gave tickets to the kids when they won the game so they could get free prizes. We also worked the four inflatables that we had. Two were obstacle courses, one was a bounce house and the other one was a bungee run. There were also demonstrations put on, including a drum circle, Karate America, the YMCA gymnastics and two butterfly presentations by Mrs. McGrath. The food was served by the Lions Club and the proceeds were donated to Sweeps, our local food pantry. There was also a scavenger hunt that was won by some of our Port Edward students and the movie Zootopia was shown downtown at dusk.
So I'll be talking about homecoming and since homecoming is later this year, on October 8th, we don't have so much planned. But we did have a meeting Friday and we discussed some things in like own separate groups for like our own topics, like parade and dress up days and everything like that. So all those are still being organized. But we do have dates, so the, on Sunday, October 2nd is Powder Puff and the Chili Cook Off. And Powder Puff starts at 1:00. And then on Thursday, October 6th, is the parade and lineup is at 5:30. And then the parade starts at 6:00 and then the pep rally and the bonfire as usual. And then Friday, October 7th, is our homecoming game against Allman Bancroft and that starts at 4:00. And then I'm also going to be talking about drama. And all the officers had a meeting last Thursday and they, Mr. Biski gave them the play name and then we'll have the meeting tomorrow to all talk about it. But the play is called Backstage. And it's going to be all the things that happen backstage during a play. So it's a comic, a comedy. And there's going to be like a tragedy, but the most of it's going to be very funny and everything. The play will take place on November 11th and we might have a Saturday play, like on Saturday as well, but we might not because of basketball conflicts, so it's still being decided. And then auditions for the play will be held soon.
Okay, for our back to school night, student council helped serve food and we handed out information packets and helped kids find their classes and we watched kids at the elementary.
You did a fine job helping people find their classes that several needed to know. As you can hear from this group, this group is, they are in everything and in many different things, both in and out of school. And being as we only, this year at the moment, have about 102 students in the high school, they are doing everything, you know, between a few students, so.
You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Any questions for them?
Thank you.
Who designed your shirts?
Uh, we got, so there's some websites online.
Oh, okay.
Shirts like that. It was mostly designed, Ms. Kleifkin changed a few things, but it was, it was mostly already there for us online, which is really nice because it ended up costing less for us.
Sure. It's always good.
Looks good.
Thank you, I appreciated your help the day of the Fun Fest, helping get things set up and that was wonderful. I know you're hard workers.
Very talented group, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is conference report. All the board members are in attendance and our next board meeting is October 10th.
I will not be here. I'm going to be on a trip, so.
Next item is administrative reports.
Um, Ms., and I'll just mention this right away, on behalf of Ms. Christie, she was unable to be here this evening. She did provide me just a little bit of an update for you that I can share with you. Obviously, we have many new faces around the school and she's getting used to learning all of those new faces. And at the elementary school here and the middle school, we've seen a significant increase in our, in our student count at both. So we're working to, she's looking at some ways to be creative and think outside the box as to how we can utilize our resources to, to cover those things. Special education, she just wanted to comment, has been a, you know, an area that is, is of a growing need. And this, the board has maybe a little background. So we have 43 students right now receiving special education services other than speech and then another 11 students with speech. But two years ago, we were down to 27 students in that, in that population. So we've had a significant increase in that population for the size school that we have. And so just, you know, keeping that in mind. And then finally, the month of September is the annual Title I Ice Cream Social. And this year they'll be welcoming local author, Gaily Warner, who'll be reading her newest children's books. The Ice Cream Social will follow and Gaily will be on hand to autograph the various books and whatnot. And that's going to be September 27th from 6:00 to 7:00. So I just wanted to add that from Ms. Christie as she is unfortunately not able to be with us this evening. Other reports, for my report, first I'd like to report on in-service. In-service, we did, we did something we normally don't do, but it was in part to get our, our crisis plan out to all of our staff and make sure that we had trained not only our, all of our staff in our crisis procedures, but also medical procedures and our mandatory reporting procedures. We kept our, normally we only have half a day on the first day of in-service for our support staff, but in order to get all of that done, and some of it's state mandated, we did keep that staff a little longer that day. And we don't normally do that, but that was okay because we needed to get, we needed to get that staff trained up as to what this crisis plan is going to be. And again, that's not a staff that we normally see all in one meeting at any point during the year. We introduced our new, new staff members and that was, had a little bit of fun doing that. Mrs. McGrath as well attended the first day of in-service and welcomed our new staff on behalf of being a board member. The remainder of in-service, really, because we spent almost the entire first day with our faculty and our staff, day number two was, we gave to them to spend on getting things done they needed to, so we'd be ready for back to school night. And then we also, on the third day, had an update on special education requirements, what's required in the law to refer students, what our obligations are within our classrooms. We heard, that day we heard from Lori Genspre and our people services director from CISA V. So our next in-service is in two weeks, believe it or not. So September 23rd, we'll have our next in-service day. We are going to spend the morning training on, on what it's like for our students who are most needy in terms of economics. So we're going to spend some time hearing about things that we can do to help those students, even within the classroom, within our school, be successful students. Because the statistics bear out that our students who are at any level of poverty struggle in the classroom for many reasons. And so we want to figure out what we can do to bridge those gaps and, and help those students be successful. So that's, that's going to be quite a bit of the day on the 23rd. Preliminary enrollment, our seat count is up by 39, as, as you may be aware, and we are looking for ways to stretch our resources where we can. We, come July 1 of this year, we didn't, there's at least 31 of those 39 we weren't expecting on July 1 because they all enrolled after July 1. And I should say at least 31 because there's obviously just new people moving into the district. So we've had to be flexible with much of what we do in the classrooms and making things work. The good news is, that's a, that's a positive for our numbers coming up through the district. So, you know, the one thing I want to say out there is every now and then I get the rumors going in the community, oh, how's the school doing? Well, this is certainly a positive. An increase of 39 students over a year ago. Our neighboring districts that are bigger than us, that would be a big increase for them. So for us being a small district, it's a very big increase. So that is a very positive for our community, for our school, so. And finally, just on our energy efficiency, we did meet with our qualified energy performance contractor, Complete Control, and started to lay the groundwork for how we would approach the energy efficiency projects this year. We were looking at really the main project being roofing and adding insulation into our roofing systems. We may need to do, in order to get the efficiency numbers that we need, we may need to be, do some lighting upgrades that are very much needed, especially in the middle school, high school building. But lighting adds, adds a lot more efficiency. And so to make the efficiency numbers work, it may be a combination project between roofing and some lighting. We are asking on, I believe it is the 26th, for a special meeting so that we can pass our final resolution to do that energy efficiency project. At this point, we may be able to do a project in the realm of $300,000 to $350,000. So we'll know that, and once we get those third Friday count numbers done, that'll be a lot, we'll know a lot closer where we can put that project number at. And, and you know, this is certainly, we're, we're looking at roofing projects of roofs over 30 years old and that have many leaks and without this type of a project, we just keep sticking Band-Aids on those because that's about all we can do with it at the moment. But some of these are in great, great need of repair. There's, and so we're really seriously trying to look at what we, trying to really look at how to maximize those dollars as much as possible on roofing first and then if need be, some lighting out of that as well, so.
That's Monday, the 26th?
Monday, the 26th, we're just looking for a shorter meeting.
Another time?
Five, 4:30 or five. And I would maybe, as you set the, establish the future board meeting dates, if you want to set that time then, obviously we can certainly do that.
Okay. And I, I had at least one comment from a staff member who was astounded and very appreciative of your efforts during the second day of in-service, get people back in their classrooms and giving them a chance to, to work, especially, you know, given that it's the start of the year. So thank you for, I'll communicate that comment from, from the staff to administration that they very much appreciated being allowed to have some time in their rooms as opposed to the usual meetings. It was, it was, it was noticed and it was appreciated. Thank you.
I also had a number of staff's comments on how, how much they appreciated that day.
Considering we, you know, we ran that in order to get the crisis plan training and we ran it longer than we typically would on the first day. And, and we readjusted that schedule to make it work so that they had a solid, solid chunk of time that we weren't sticking meetings in because we know, we know, we had a lot of new staff, there's, yeah, they needed the time.
Yes, well, thank you.
All right, thanks Kyle. Questions and comments from people in attendance? I don't see any. So we go on to consent agenda. Are there any gifts?
Any gifts?
I was approved the minutes first? Do you have those minutes?
Minutes for what?
Number eight.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, consider approval of minutes of the past meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
There's a motion at second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Number nine, consider approval of financial reports?
Yes, we do have a gift. We have a gift from the Port Edward Music Booster Club to the, to band, to the music department for $4,000, $4,061 for the purchase of some instruments.
There is one unnoted donation which we'll try to formally maybe recognize in October, but this just happened. If you'd notice our football team running around on the field in, in, in yellow pants. Those came from the Packers who donated those for practice.
Oh, I wonder where those came from.
Yep, those are, those are donated from the Green Bay Packers. They are the actual pants that the Packers were using. They donated them to us for practice.
Wouldn't the size be different?
Well, there, there were some sizes that were a little different. But, and then just, and I know this isn't, I just wanted to add this in, the gift from the Alexander Foundation for the curtain, that should be in by the time the play is in, we should have that curtain. So we've, should be mid-October that will be in, so.
How did the Packer gift come about?
Uh, they apparently look for school districts to give things to throughout the year and they don't give to the same school districts, so they spread that around.
Our turn came up.
Our turn apparently came up. One of our fellow conference schools apparently got gloves. So we got practice pants, they got gloves.
Okay, well.
But I'll have, I'll have Justin put together just the information so that the board can do a formal thank you to that.
Good PR for the Packers and keeps their, keeps their, their training room cleaned out.
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the financial report, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion at second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. There unfinished business? There is none? New business, consider approval of service agreement with Complete Control.
Uh, this is very similar to our agreement last year with Complete Control. Calls for the same number of hours, represents probably about a 1% increase in cost. It's only about $150, $200 increase for our contract from a year ago, so it's not, not significant. They, they, in fact, I don't even know if it's that much, you know, that I'm looking at this a little differently. But this, this is, I equate it to when you own a furnace, you have the furnace company come in and make sure the furnace is working correctly before you turn it on. This is that kind of service through all of our systems, both AC and heating and checking other pneumatic components and pieces. So this is that type of service and it's about 101 hours is, I think last year we used 100 of our 101 hours on that contract. Now, this is the maintenance agreement, this is not the repair agreement. We have a pricing agreement with them on repair from some issues in years past, so that's a little different. This is our annual service, so.
All right, any questions? I entertain a motion to approve service agreement with Complete Control.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tracy, second by Leo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of 66.03 agreement with Nikusa School District.
Uh, this is a student-specific agreement and we would just ask that you approve that. It's in the best interest of the student that we have that agreement for what that student's educational needs are, so.
So moved.
Then a motion.
Second.
Second by Tracy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion approved. Consider approval of teacher's aid position, 21 and a half hours a week. Kelly Hildebrand.
Uh, so just in an attempt to make sure that we are covering all of the IEP services and pieces we need to cover, we are looking to add this position for the remainder of the year, 21 and a half hours. We need to do some further exploration of making sure that we're covering everything as we are legally bound, but this will certainly get us a long ways toward the side to start with.
So moved.
Second.
Motion at second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of teacher incentive plan.
Um, so we had, we had a, a group look at ways to provide incentive to our teaching staff. And we have two proposals for you, a proposal A and a B, or proposal one and a two, which we'll look at as being a longevity or loyalty incentive within the district. Proposal one would just provide an incentive for staff members who've had at least one year's worth of service. And it would be a straight incentive across the board. Proposal two would be a tiered proposal with employees with at least 15 years of service on September 1, 2016, receiving, as we, in this original proposal, we've looked at a $750 loyalty incentive, but may look at a 600, if we use, so choose to do that. A tier two, less than 15, but more than 10 years essentially, with at least 10 years of service, but less than 15, with an incentive payment of 500. And then tier three, less than 10 years as of September 1, looking at that to be a, but hired before September 1, 2015, so they have at least one year, this to being a 400 incentive payment. Along with that, we have an earned incentive proposal where staff members earn points. This is a one-year proposal, so it would be effective for one year as a supplement or an incentive piece for our staff. If anything further, we would investigate a different plan moving beyond one year.
I would move the incentive, the loyalty portion of this be based at 600, 500, 400 in the different categories that you, that you mentioned. And I would suggest that that be placed on the base salary. And I, I have nothing to add to the, the other portion of the.
The earned incentive.
Yeah.
But that being part of it.
Yep. I would make that a motion.
Then a motion by Joe.
A second.
Second by Tracy. Any more discussion?
I just think it's, it's important for our staff and the public to understand that, given the limitations placed on, on public school districts by the state in terms of what we can, we can pay our teachers, I think it's important to do everything we possibly can to let these people know that their efforts and their hard work are appreciated and, and recognized. And, and this is, this is, this is the very least that we can do. And, and I'm gratified that we have the means to be able to do something in a year when the, the, you know, the amount of additional compensation provided is, is almost, is almost nothing.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Next item, first reading of reporting child abuse and neglect policy update.
Uh, the policy update I provided you is really to bring our child abuse and reporting neglect policy in line with what the current law is. There was, it initially talked about a staff member immediately contacting a building principal. We didn't want there to be any confusion when we reviewed this as a staff, that it is not the first responsibility of a staff member to contact the principal if they suspect child abuse. It is their first responsibility to report it. We wanted to clarify that because that is, that could be secondary that they contact the principal. In fact, we talked about contacting the counselor and the principal and others in here, that's secondary. But first and foremost, staff members have to understand they are required by law to make a report to human services if they suspect child abuse or neglect. Our, the way our policy stated it before, it was a bit confusing on that, so that, this language really just clears that up so that staff understand that, we didn't want to have a staff member say, I couldn't get ahold, you were out of the building, I couldn't get ahold of you as principal, and not report it. Because that would be the worst scenario, is a staff member says, well, I didn't, I didn't contact anybody because I couldn't report it to you first or the counselor first. Nope. Regardless, they have to report it as soon as practically possible. So that's really what this language is a cleanup of, so.
All right, that's the first reading, so we'll visit that next month for the final pass. Next item, opportunity or individual board member comment. Kathy? Here with you. Kathy, fair with you?
I was just impressed with the, little bit of the first in-service day that I was here for. The new staff were, I think, excited to be in our district, which is really good news. And the returning staff seemed excited to be back, so I thought it was great.
Leo?
Again, as I did last month, encourage the public to keep track of the upcoming elections, question candidates regarding their positions on public schools, public schools funding, funding for the tech colleges and universities. Public schools are the cornerstone upon which our society has been built, and the diminishment of support for and assistance to enable those institutions to continue has caused enormous problems. And candidates for public office in the upcoming election cycle need to have their feet held to the fire about that.
All right, Joe?
I'd just like to say that due to several personal situations, this will be my last board meeting. I've already discussed this with my fellow board members. And I've enjoyed my time on the Port Edward School Board. It's been a challenge at times, but it's also been very rewarding. I'm glad that, I'm glad to see our numbers going up. And I credit a staff that goes out of the way to make that happen. And when you look at our test scores and stuff for the last year, it's no surprise to me that people want to bring their kids to Port. And I'm hoping that that continues and I look forward to still being involved, but not as a board member. Thank you.
Tracy?
I'll just kind of go off of what he said about the numbers increasing for Port Edward's school district. I think that's exciting as well, and I'm proud to be a part of this school district. Having two children, well, three children now heading off to college from Port Edward's, it's wonderful to see how prepared they are from their education here for the UW system.
And I'd just like to thank Joel for his many years on the board, and it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is establish future board meetings. Discuss change to day of the week for monthly board meetings. I put that on the agenda. For personal reasons, I would like to move the day of the monthly board meeting, if there is no strong objections. I was thinking Wednesday would be a good day. Because Tuesday, there's a lot of athletic events and Thursdays, and First Friday we don't want. But Monday's just, I'd rather.
Wednesday's worked for me.
Yeah.
That would be starting, so that would become Wednesday, 12th of October?
I would maybe suggest do it as in November, change if that's possible, just so that we can get word out to people.
Right, that's fine.
November would be.
October would stay.
November 9th.
So October, it would still be on the 10th.
Right.
Monday, the 10th.
And November, Wednesday, the 9th.
Wednesday, the 9th. Okay.
That is fine.
There, we may have to adjust it for a month of January because of when the. Convention is. Convention is.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't, I think that's really the only thing off the top of my head that's would really crowd in the way, but we've also had board meetings on different.
Sure.
Nights as months have gone on for different reasons.
Make sure to notify the League of Women Voters because they have a bulletin that's published every month listing all of the regular monthly meetings. And they publicize what our meetings are and we should keep them in the loop if we're going to change the date that we regularly meet, so.
Okay. The other thing I would ask you to do is set the time for that meeting on.
Monday, the 26th.
26th.
Oh, Monday, the 26th.
And it shouldn't really be a lengthy agenda. It's really going to be just that, that, the idea of the energy project is the agenda.
Be able to be there for that one?
Maybe.
Okay, now we have, we have a situation here for the September 26th and the, and the October 10th meeting in that we will be down to three board members. So if she's going to be gone and Joe is resigning.
We've got to have everybody.
So that means that we've got to have all hands on deck for those two events.
Yep. September 26th is fine for me, 4:30.
4:30 should be fine.
So three of them is fine, yep.
As I know now, yeah.
And that'll be over at the administration office, we'll do that there.
And that's at what time?
4:30.
4:30, okay.
And October 10th will be our regular meeting.
And that's at 5:00?
Yeah.
5:30 unless there's.
For the regular meeting unless we have to have a closed session for reasons.
Now, did we say there's another meeting in October as well, the yearly?
There is the annual meeting, that's 24th.
And that's on Monday, the 24th.
Fourth, yeah.
Same time?
Oh, that's nice.
We haven't published anything on that one.
You can have it on Wednesday if you want.
Yeah. But is that fine on that Monday? Or do you want to do it on the Wednesday?
We can keep that for a month. Well, that would be two Mondays then.
Do you want to make that Wednesday?
Try and make that to Wednesday.
26th.
So it'd be Wednesday, October 20.
As long as we don't have any tests going.
Wednesday, the 26th through October, I won't be here.
Oh, too many, okay, back, two more days.
I'll be in Madison on Wednesday, the 26th.
Okay, so back to Monday.
The only, you may want to do that just in case we, for some reason with lack, if for some reason, seats not filled yet, and if you're not there and we lack the quorum, again, we would, that's, we've got to have that meeting so we can finalize our budgets and taxes and all of that, so.
I'm sorry, but I'm.
That's okay.
You will still be gone then.
No, I'll be back on the 24th.
But to do, is that fine to do that on that Monday then?
Monday, the 24th.
Monday, the 24th? It's 6 o'clock, the budget hearing is at 5:30? Budget hearings at 6:00?
I'll send an email when I post what that exact time is.
All right, we have all those meetings set, I think. So, call for adjournment.
Aye, so moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?